Yes, I can. Thank you. Thank you.
For my four.
So I can't tell if my camera shows me or if it shows the picture. You. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
I'm gonna log off and log back on really quickly because my sound is horrible. All right, can you hear me?
I've got the mayor and I think that we've got the full council here.
Okay, give me a minute here. Microphone, speakers. Brian, can you talk or somebody talk?
How do you hear this, mayor?
I can't hear anything. I'm getting this underwater garbled. Is that the way I sound to you?
Sound a little choppy but not garbled. Can someone else try and see if maybe just listen?
Okay then. And there's a huge delay, so. Oh wow. I'm gonna...
Kathy, if you click on the little arrow by the mute button.
Yeah.
There's an option to test your speaker and microphone.
My speaker's fine.
Right, but it does both.
It's my... Hold on, I'm getting there.
I don't know if it...
You can also switch the phone if you want.
I may have to switch to the phone.
Phone audio anyway.
All right. Having not ever done that, do I leave the screen up and just dial in?
Yeah, put it on mute and then you can dial in, but before you do that, if you go to that dropdown that councillor Kenyon mentioned, beside the mute button, there's a down arrow. And see where your... See what your speaker is. And what your microphone is. So we're not hearing you if you're talking now.
Yeah, you're underwater. Why don't you go ahead? Let me dial in.
Okay, the number you're gonna dial is right here. If you look at the screen.
Okay. Yeah, I see it's on the bottom of my screen.
Come to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by panel. The meeting now. There are fourteen.
Are you here? Can you speak? No, we're not hearing you.
How about now?
So are you muted on your computer?
Yeah, my... I have a mute on my computer now. You know what? Okay, so I'm... Hold on.
Phone. I just hung up my phone. Chrissy, will you go ahead and start the meeting? I will log out and log back in again. Maybe if I shut completely down, we'll get a better thing and try to join you there, okay?
Sounds good. So we'll call the meeting to order at 7:06 PM. And first thing we'll do is do the pledge of allegiance. Brian, I'll ask you to lead, please.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brian. Jackie, will you do the roll call?
Yes. Mayor Holston. Councillor McClelland.
Here.
Councillor Whitney.
Here.
Councillor Forcombe.
Here.
Councillor Maxfield.
Here.
Councillor Kenyon.
Here.
Councillor Hollitt.
Here.
Thank you, Jackie. Does anyone have any addition corrections or adjustments to the agenda? I know Brian has one.
Yes, I do. I'd like to strike 14.1 appointments the applicant has withdrawn from consideration.
Does anyone have anything else? I have one and it can be anywhere on the agenda. I just wanted to talk about the upcoming positions for councillor and I believe that the terms might be possibly incorrect. So maybe we could put that down 9.2.
Okay.
All right, and do we have any public comment?
You have one here in the whack. You want to start with that?
Yes, please. Thank you.
You would introduce yourself and your address, please.
I'm Marjorie Patricia. My address is 46386 Highway 58, Westphal, Oregon 97492. I'd kind of like to address the Highway 58 Transportation System Plan. In last week's paper, councillor Maxfield stated that she wants reassurance that Option 1, not move forward without a public action committee and citizen feedback and assurances of the option to go back to five lanes if that's what the community wants. I believe you already received the citizen feedback. Earlier citizens through a survey told council they do not want your transportation system plan. In fact, there was some very negative responses to it. And I even believe city council considered putting it to a vote. Channel 9 KEZI News recently reported Option 1 was voted down in committee. And it seems like you're still pushing it. Councillor Hollitt commented both options have a price tag. Why make citizens pay for something that they overwhelmingly just told us they don't want? Another no. So that begs the question, how many times you have to be told no? Council's constant pushing Option 1 must be why one person objected to the arrogance of city government not listening to the people. Councillor McClelland appears to be making Option 1 personal. He also continually refers to and compares Oak Ridge to Lepine, Oregon on Highway 97. There is no comparison. Lepine has businesses on both sides of the highway, wall to wall, not sporadic with rampant empty closed businesses as Oak Ridge has. Rascals Market, Cedar Creek Cafe, Midway Gardens, A&amp;W to name the latest closures. And Lepine embraces their rural citizens where Oak Ridge does not. Without Lepine's rural citizens, there would be no Frontier Days, Rhubarb Festival, Jazz Festival, et cetera. Not Bethany and La Library cards. You can do all the beautification of the world, but without open businesses, there is no reason to stop in Oak Ridge. Oak Ridge only offers groceries, gas, and a burger. There were planters on Highway 58 with attractive trees until the local garden club cut all the trees down and replaced them with plantings that are too small for the large containers. They're now pretty much unkept and rather unattractive. Greenwater Park is another unkept rundown eyesore. There has been no renovation or modernization there for years. Mayor Holston commented that Option 2 is a good option and O'Donnell is planning on constructing passing lanes outside of town. The outside of town passing lane is the only passing lane on Highway 58 in a rural residential area. We have kids, grandkids, pets, horses, and a resident elk herd. Which two elk were killed there this spring? Your desire for a traffic... Two traffic lanes in Oak Ridge and you're hunting your problem onto the rural residents without their hour input is totally unjust. Quite historically has served Highway 58 very well, is a center turn lane and reduced speed limits. There are twenty-five... Twenty-eight, pardon me, dedicated center turn lanes from I-5 to Crescent Cut Off Road in about seventy-two miles. There are seven dedicated passing lanes from mile post thirty-two to Interstate 5 and one slow-moving vehicle lane for a total of eight in thirty-two miles. Highway 58 is not I-5 except in Oak Ridge. And democracy has played no role in any of this from the very beginning. Thank you. Can I go now?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
Thank you, Marjorie. Is there anyone else? Is that a no, Brian?
No one at the whack. And I guess I can see if there's anybody on the Zoom platform want to make a comment.
Kathy, are you back?
I am back. And everybody sounds like they're not underwater anymore, so that's good.
Okay, I'll go ahead and give the meeting back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy. I appreciate it. Chrissy, did we do any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yeah, I had one 9.2 and it's regarding councillor seat elections.
Okay.
And I assumed if you had any mayor comments, we would go back to that as well.
My... Evidently, my internet connection is poor today for some reason. I am still hearing everybody again underwater and I only hear part of what is being said. So Chrissy, I think you're gonna have to leave this because I can't understand what's being said at all. And it appears that my connection is extremely slow. There's a huge delay in my photo and what I'm saying. I will probably dial in and we'll see how that goes. I... If it's possible, I did have a couple additions. I wanted to talk about the levy and some information that I received from ElCog. And also, I wanted to talk about some ordinances for the PD and ask some questions. But that can go later. So maybe at the business from council, we can add that and I will try to get back in on a reasonable feed, okay?
Copy.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll add that for Kathy under 9.3 and 9.4.
Okay.
Are you able to jot that down, Brian?
I got it, yep.
Awesome. Do we have any council comments or announcements? Hearing none. Looks like next is business from the city council, which is 9.1, select a representative to vote at the League of Oregon Cities membership meeting.
Right. You want me to take this?
Sure, I can speak about it a little bit too after you're done.
Okay, it's the League of Oregon Cities Board of Directors election and we need a voting delegate for the city to designate one. It's due to them very soon, by the 28th, I guess. And we need a motion to select the voting delegate. There's no exhibits. The explanation is under the issue there. The meeting is on the October 15th. It's a virtual conference, so that would be... You'd be able to dial in, but they would like to have a name prior to that. So your options are to designate a voting delegate or not. We're obviously recommending Option 1 for the staff, so... And your motions before you.
Thank you, Brian. I don't know if council remembers this or not, but I was chosen for this position last year. I did attend the conference and I participated as the voting delegate. I'm willing to do it again this year if there is no one else interested. However, if someone else is interested, I'm happy to support anyone else in being that delegate.
So that's on the 15th of October?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, and it's a Thursday?
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I can't do that.
Mostly it entails reading through some of their information that they're voting on and voting in positions for those ElCog seats, I believe, or is it League of Oregon?
Yep.
Those seats. It's not really difficult. It's just reading through material and of course, the same way that we do our agenda bills, they have a recommended motion on all of them as well.
Okay, that does fall on the... The live... Or the conference this year is on that day if anyone's attending, which I won't be, so I won't be able to do that.
It's a virtual conference, though.
I know.
Yep.
I'm fine with you voting, Chrissy.
I'd like... I'm happy to do it again if there's no other interest.
Okay.
Yeah, I just can't because of work, so makes it very challenging.
Do we have... Can we have someone make a motion?
Yeah, I'm wondering if Brian could scroll down on the screen. I would like to move to appoint Chrissy Hollitt to act as the voting member for the City of Oak Ridge at the League of Oregon Cities Membership Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? I think we already had that. Jackie, can you call for the vote?
Yes. Councillor Hollitt.
Aye.
Councillor Whitney.
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon.
Aye.
Councillor Maxfield.
Aye.
Councillor Forcombe.
Aye.
Councillor McClelland.
Aye.
Mayor Holston.
I will refrain from voting.
Okay.
Is that a motion carried?
Yes.
Okay, so next thing was 9.2. I mentioned the council seats. I recently read that we had it advertised as four seats available, two of those being four term... Our four-year terms and two of them being two-year terms. And I believe that they should actually be three four-year terms and one two-year term. And I'm happy to go over that tonight or talk to maybe the mayor and Brian about that as well, either whatever council would prefer.
Just to see, after we printed the announcements and everything, we realized there was a mistake. The actual notice which was posted today does reflect the accurate three-in-one. So the notice that went out, Jackie put it out today, I believe, and that's a correct copy.
Wonderful. Thank you, Brian. Next would be 9.3. Kathy, are you ready to speak?
I can give it a try. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the upcoming levy. I sent an email out to ElCog asking for some direction about what we... How do we proceed as far as staying within the parameters of the rules? What can we do as council? What... And I believe Brian has already shared with all of the council a packet of information about what city employees can and cannot do. So some of the... Some of the questions, what I'd like to do with your permission is to share with you the few questions that I asked of him and his response. And you will see in his response that he refers frequently to the fact that we do have... We are... We do have a city attorney and suggests that these questions need to go to him. So what I want to do is share the questions and his answers and then ask council permission to then reach out to the city attorney with this... With this set of questions in addition to any that you may have, and it doesn't have to be obviously immediately. You can let me know so that we can get the ball rolling here. So I'm pulling up this email from Howard. And it's coming up. Hold on. Hopefully. It will open up. I guess my computer is just tired of being on conferences all day long. And it appears that it's not going to... Going to open up for me. So let me share with you what I asked him. So, oh, there it goes. Okay, so I asked, can we as a council discuss our plans for the... For the passing of the levy at a council meeting? And his answer was, well, there are a couple parts to this. If council is asking staff to participate in a discussion or provide a report for the discussion about passing the levy, based on his reading of guidance and past advice, I believe staff would, of course, only be limited to providing facts, discussing impacts of passage and failure to pass the levy, but could not, for example, participate in strategizing a campaign to pass the levy or what actions we should take to promote a levy, at least not while they're on duty. So that kind of explains what we heard... What we read in the material Brian gave us. I also asked how, you know, we are going to ask fire and EMS and police department to help us. The unions have agreed to do that. There was a question that was brought up and he responded, this concerns volunteers. So if this levy is a levy to support fire and EMS and the city uses volunteers, if the volunteers receive any compensation, I would say that conventional wisdom would suggest they be treated the same as an employee. And given the structure of the Oak Ridge Fire EMS Department, I think this will be a critical city attorney question also. So he really didn't answer that very well, other than to say we probably should check with our attorney on that. I asked him, can we form an ad hoc committee from council members to work on the passing of the levy? And as he said, he says, I believe this follows the same rule as question one. It would be important to distinguish between an ad hoc committee for the purpose of identifying what might be included in a levy or the structure of a levy from working on its passage, which is what we would want to do. It appears to me that elected officials can do this, but of course, staff cannot participate other than to provide information that we request. I also mentioned to him that we were preparing to reach out to the community, to talk to various groups, civic faith, school, et cetera, and ask what the regulations would be as far as council members attending and participating in that conversation and helping to explain what the levy was and answer questions. And he, of course, said, you know, as in any other meeting law, you know, it depends on what our quorum is and we know what that number is. But he did say something interesting. He said that note that a series of discussions among a quorum of the council could also be considered a serial meeting. So even if a quorum is not present at these meetings, a series of discussions could then create an issue. So I really think... I'm gonna close my window here. I really think we need to reach out to our attorney to get some clarification on this so we don't overstep our bounds. And then I did ask an obvious question that I thought I knew the answer to. Are there any provisions for a meeting with council that is not open to the public? You know, executive session type of things to discuss planning and strategizing. And of course, he said, no, there aren't. All of your meetings will be open if you are meeting as a council. So given that, that information, and I know I rattled that off to everybody and I'm sorry, I really would like to probably Monday, send an email to our attorney, sharing with him Howard's answers to my questions and any additional questions you might want to think about. Maybe Chrissy, you and I could put our heads together about that and if any other councillors have questions so that we could begin to form this action committee to work toward the passage of this... Of this levy. And so also at this time, I wanted to make sure that... That we all understand the language that is in the levy. So I encourage everybody to make sure you read through that so that if we have any questions about what exactly does this mean? And let's really have a good understanding of it and then we can we can designate some time, may perhaps at our next meeting. Also, maybe it would be worth considering, and I'm just posing this question to council, having additional meetings weekly to discuss our next steps for this because it's coming up quick and make an action plan as to what we want to do. So having said that, I'll take a big breath and I would love to hear what your thoughts are on this and also to ask specifically if you can comment on reaching and also to ask specifically if you can comment on reaching out to the attorney with these questions.
I'm curious if this would be an opportunity that maybe we should have kind of a small work session with our attorney to do kind of a Q and A because my head is definitely, after listening to that, my head is definitely kind of spinning with a lot of questions. I would imagine other council members are as well.
I think that's a really great idea. I mean, I can certainly reach out and we can set up some sort of a work session to have him on the line. I think we, I think we probably ought to come up with a good, a good understanding of the questions that we have and that type of thing before we do that. What is council, what other counselors? Thank you, Chrissy. What else, what do you think?
So do you think we necessarily need a work session? Is this something we could do at our next council meeting?
I hesitate to say yes to that only because of the timeline involved. The next council meeting will be the end of August. And I, well, I understand it's summertime and a lot of people are busy doing things or going places. I think we need to know where we're going with this quick, you know, pretty soon. But that's my opinion. And if you think it could wait till the next council meeting, we can definitely do it then.
I'm wondering if we could just have that smaller subset of council meet with the attorney and that way those who have the capacity can step into that and who are interested in helping out in that capacity.
We can definitely have a small subset meet with the attorney and bring those questions to him. And I, and I think what you're saying, Tricia, is then come back and report to council.
Yeah, I think that would be my approach. I know that my capacity is pretty booked. Yeah.
That's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Kathy, I'd like to see the possibility that we, you know, we get all of the.
Lost to Dawn. I can't hear you. Can anybody hear Dawn?
That's possible, actual information to, hello? Can anybody hear me?
I can hear you now, but a large section of what you said dropped off. So.
Okay. I'd like to know if it's possible, after we have gathered as much factual information as we possibly can, to hold a, like a town hall meeting so that people would be able to ask us questions and get answers before they go to vote. Is that a possibility?
Definitely that's a possibility. And I think that's what we will, that we will need to determine as far as what our, what our process is to, to promote the levy. I think a town hall, whether it's virtual or, you know, cross your fingers if it was ever possible to meet together, is absolutely the best way to do that, to get questions answered by the public. And we may have to do some sort of variation of that, maybe smaller sessions. But I think that's what we need to discuss. So I agree with you. That needs to definitely be part of the, of the process of getting the information out to our voters.
This is Bobby. I strongly agree with Dawn's suggestion. I think that's a fantastic idea and to have it very well advertised.
Well, okay, so, and I agree with it too, but I want to set that aside because we're not, I'm, right now I want to talk about reaching out to the attorney. So Tricia suggested that maybe to, a couple of us reach out to the attorney with questions of everybody and bring it back to, to council at our next session. And we could ask the attorney to step in and be available if necessary. And that would be our, our first step to getting some of the answers to this. And then we need to decide what our next steps are and how we want to do outreach. And part of that outreach will definitely include, you know, a larger town hall type of experience where questions and answers can be brought back and forth. So are we okay with, so Chrissy, maybe Chrissy and I can, can put our heads together and, and put some questions together in addition to the ones I've already have here. We can, I'll have Brian email them to all of you and then we can submit those to the attorney for answers. How does that sound?
I'm personally fine with funneling all questions through you or you and Chrissy or you and Chrissy and the CA. I don't particularly have any other additional questions right now, but I think that that would be a more efficient manner than trying to hold a round table, given the timeline that we need to get this done.
Right. Okay. So this is so hard to do when I can't see all of you. Okay, so are we all in agreement that that's the way we should go? I think what I'm going to do is, is ask for a motion. So I would move that, that council permit council president and mayor to, to present to the attorney questions concerning the, the, moving forward our, our levy to the public and how council interacts with public.
Second.
Is there any, any other discussion? If not, then Jackie, will you vote for, or will you call a vote?
Yes. Counselor McClelland.
Hi.
Counselor Maxfield.
Hi.
Counselor Forcombe.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Mayor Holston.
Hi.
Counselor Whitney.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
I.
All right. Thank you, council. I appreciate your, your patience with that whole thing. Also, I wanted council to know, and this is with your permission, I reached out to Franny Brindle of ODOT to ask her to set up a meeting next week to just discuss what the next steps are and to ask some obvious questions about how we move forward with, with looking at option two and what does that mean? And, and how does ODOT interact with us in that? So she has not gotten back to me with a date and a time, but I would definitely love to have one, one counselor participate in that with me when I find out when it is. So if I have any volunteers, I'm happy to, to let that know.
I'll do that.
Okay, Dawn, I will reach out to you when she gets back to me. Thank you. And then, and then the only other thing I had was a question and I had let Brian know that I was going to ask this question. I know in the past we have talked about ordinances that need to be changed or modified or created to assist our police department in the execution of our, of laws in our, in ordinances or codes in our community. And I believe the last answer we received was that some of those were before the attorney and they were working on them. And so I was going to ask CA to give us an update on that. And I'm happy to take those answers during your report, Brian.
Okay, that's fine, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And I don't have anything else. Council, is there any other things that you wanted to, oh, can I ask a question? The, the vote that was taken for a representative to Oregon cities, what, where, who's doing that?
Kathy, I offered to do that again since I did it last year. But I did say that I would support anybody else that wanted to do it. Didn't sound like anybody had the time to though.
Thank you, Chrissy. I appreciate that. And all right, so if there is no further business from the council, then I will move to 10. And Brian, you are on 10.1 for a CA update.
With your permission and since Travel Oregon was so very patient at our five and a half hour meeting and eventually we're booted, I'll ask if I can put them first so they can get off the hook. Andy is online if he's ready to go.
I think that is an excellent suggestion. We would love to hear from you, Andy.
Well, really appreciate the opportunity and thank you again for making some room on your agenda today. And Brian, just love to be Travel Oregon, you know, with that budget to market Lane County, but we're actually Traveling County. So we'll talk a little bit about Lane County today and I'm going to share my screen with y'all and so that we can take a look at a little update and we'll get this set up. Okay. Where did my PowerPoint go? There we go. Okay, there we go. So again, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight and I want to leave some time for questions, but I want to start off with just a brief update on, you know, the visitor impact, the visitor industry economic impact in Lane County is very significant. And the numbers I'm showing here are from calendar year 2019. That's when we get the reporting from Dean Runyon and Associates. And it shows that Lane County generated a little over a billion dollars in direct spending for the second year in a row. 783 million of that you see here on the chart coming from direct visitor spending from visitors from outside the area and another 258 million from, spending from people within Lane County. So over the last decade, travel and tourism, the sector has grown quite a bit. You can see here we're up to 11,140 jobs and that job growth has been about 3.1% per year over the last decade. And yet the wage growth has been over 7% annually. So it's, it's a big business here in Lane County and throughout Oregon. I would like to look at visitor spending because it benefits several industry sectors, including commercial accommodations, but most, or not most importantly, but also importantly, restaurants, grocery stores, entertainment, outdoor recreation and retail sales. I think oftentimes people think about visitor spending and they think about probably accommodations being the biggest part of the visitor dollar spent. Well, the common thing every visitor has, whether they're staying in a commercial lodging property or your house with you, is that everybody has to eat and drink. And so you can see there between food service and food store purchases, 39 cents of every visitor dollar is going to food and beverage. Room tax collections, there are four cities in Lane County that tax commercial accommodations on top of the county tax rate. And that goes against hotels, vacation rentals, campgrounds, all collecting the transient room tax. And this slide gives you a sense of the volume of revenue and tax, both at a city level and a regional level within Lane County. And I don't think there's any surprise here with the majority of commercial accommodations in the Eugene Springfield metro area. The metro area is collecting about 77% of all transient room taxes. When we look at the distribution of those room taxes, this is what it looks like. And there are four cities with a local tax and they receive that tax completely. And they also receive three points of Lane County's total eight points of room tax. And that's shown in red. So each of these four cities that are shown in red adds on to the county rate and they collect that and keep that 100% to themselves. Other cities, like the City of Oak Ridge, receive three points from Lane County represented in the blue, the capital rural community share slice, plus appropriate portion of the visitor services TRT, which is shown in the green rural community slice. And then when we look at Traveling County, Traveling County receives 2.1 points or about 70% of the visitor services TRT fund in green to market all of Lane County as a visitor destination. And these are last fiscal year's numbers and they're going to change dramatically in light of the pandemic that we're facing right now and the impact on the hospitality industry. Transient room tax revenues, we are on pace up through mid-March to look at our 10th consecutive fiscal year of growth in these TRT receipts countywide. We were looking at 5.19%, almost 5.2% and expecting really that to be bolstered by a really strong spring and summer this year, especially with the reopening of Hayward Field and return of Track and Fields to the metro area. But the impacts of COVID-19 and the pandemic have been really dramatic. We had over 33% of our hotel rooms closed at one point during the pandemic and several have still not reopened, including our large conference center hotel, The Graduate. So through the end of the fiscal year, we are down about 19% in transient room taxes. And our projections for the coming fiscal year are that we're going to be down about 30% over last year. And that's what we're using as a base. And we're going to kind of see how that goes. We've beaten the projections in this, kind of the April, May, June coming into the, kind of the heart of the pandemic. But we're also expecting mass gatherings and other things to happen in the fall and things to start to recover through the winter and next spring. So we're going to keep our fingers crossed that we get some therapeutics or a vaccine here soon. Traveling County has three primary target markets, including leisure visitors, conventions and sports. In conventions and sports, we're really marketing to the planners who are, you know, planning those events and we hope to bring them here. So that's a B to B kind of communication. And once an event is secured, we support communications and marketing to the participants to draw them here and keep them here for pre and post activities. We work really hard to ensure our communities are represented at the state and regional levels and partner with all 10 chambers of commerce in Lane County. As you can see by this chart that is coming up, we're part of the very multi-layered marketing distribution system. Travel Oregon at the top is a state-created agency to market Oregon to the nation and the world, and they do a fantastic job. 20% of Travel Oregon's budget is mandated to go to their regional programs and there are seven regions in the state. We actually overlap with two. You can see the logos there at the bottom of the page, Willamette Valley Visitors Association, the Oregon Coast Visitors Association, Oak Ridge is within that Willamette Valley Visitors Association scope. So with that kind of distribution channel, we're able to, you know, push information up through the regional programs to the state and get extra eyeballs on all the things that are happening in our region. I'd also just highlight that as a partner organization, we have over 600 business partners that are the ones that are delivering a great experience to our visitors. And we really appreciate the partnerships that we have with all those business partners. Our brand promise defined by industry and community stakeholders across the county in a 2008 piece of work that took about 18 months is really focused on the strong outdoor recreation that we have throughout the entire county. But that's not all we focus on because we know we have a great food and beverage sector. We know we have great cultural experiences and arts, other activities that go on here. But that's what's common across the entire 4,700 square miles of Lane County. And as you can see there, our destination has enriching, authentic, approachable experiences for all ages and abilities. And that's true from Oak Ridge all the way to Florence and places in between. Since COVID-19 hit and all the related stay-at-home directives began in March, we've really worked closely with the chambers of commerce throughout the county. And one of the first pieces of work was our hashtag Love Lane content series. As people were staying at home, we wanted to accomplish a few things with this program, which was creating some kind of community glue, a pride of place, a support for our local businesses, which were really struggling and continue to struggle, and connection to future experience planning. So with that, the Love Lane content includes Zoom backgrounds. We're all doing a lot more Zoom meetings these days. So we have Zoom backgrounds that have the hashtag Love Lane logo on them. We have a video and social media tiles. And this campaign, and again, working with our chambers of commerce involved or evolved into hashtag Love Lane Business. And with that, we worked on resource guides for our business community. We also worked on a business pledge and a customer pledge, really kind of reinforcing the idea that we all need to be patient. We need to show respect and thoughtfulness towards the businesses and their employees who are really dealing with a lot of challenging guidelines that they had to implement during this time. And so we implemented that and that was very successful. So businesses could use all these. use all these assets and also kind of leverage the hashtag Love Lane campaign. So we had the hashtag Love Lane, it evolved into hashtag Love Lane Business, and soon to launch is hashtag Love Lane Arts, where the arts community throughout the county is going to leverage this same information and campaign. As we moved into Phase Two of the governor's reopening plan, we really wanted to be sure that residents who might be concerned about visit volume, you know, were reassured that, you know, we weren't going to go out there and really kind of start pushing visitors to them if they weren't ready. So we assisted in kind of messaging in the metro area to kind of honor those directives to stay close to home in Phase One. And as we moved into Phase Two, we worked really closely with, again, the chambers of commerce and communities to have conversations about were they ready? And also to work with visitors, primarily people within the county who wanted to get out and start moving around, to instill confidence that as they went out, they would also feel safe. And so you can see the goals of this instilling confidence campaign here were really to do those primary things of being sure communities were ready, but also that visitors felt comfortable, that they would be safe moving around as we were all able to do that at the beginning of Phase Two. So we know from national sentiment research that travelers are researching kind of, you know, where they want to go post-pandemic. And we started to see that a little bit now. And again, they want to travel safely. So we've been working to kind of welcome them through these different messages that we've been putting together. And we've created and released messaging on, again, treating business with patience and respect as, as people do come into the areas, we want them to, again, follow the protocols, be good visitors, and respect the local community. I'm going to play a thirty-second public service announcement that we created for social media. And we also have one-minute videos on hotel readiness and restaurant readiness. And we also worked with radio stations. We put together a radio PSA and worked with KMTR, KVAL, to produce two television PSAs, both for Phase One and Phase Two. So I wanted to play one of these and I'm hopeful that the sound will come through and we'll give this a shot here.
Our local businesses are preparing to welcome you back to places we all love to ensure residents and visitors are safe to explore our towns and trails. Hotels and restaurants are finding creative new ways to serve our communities, innovating to bring the familiar service and experiences that feed the soul. They are carefully preparing for your return so that it's safe to welcome visitors again. We can't wait to see you.
I hope that you had a chance to hear that. If not, I'm going to put some links in the chat bar when we're done here and you can link through to that. All of our assets are available online for, for people to see. So here's just a list of the associated assets that we have put together, again, social media videos, blogs, did some video logs where I went out and talked to restaurant owners, lodging owners about, again, how they were adapting to the guidelines in, in, you know, preparing to welcome guests back into their places of business. And so like I said, I'll put those links in the, in the chat bar when we're done. One of the encouraging things as we've gone through this is our website traffic is about eighty, and I think it's probably getting closer to eighty-five percent of typical for this time of year, which we're really encouraged by. You can imagine when travel was shut down, there was no planning going on. People weren't looking at websites to go, you know, to these different destinations. But we're really seeing good traffic again. And some of the information that we're able to gather through research project has really encouraged us that we're positioned well here in Lane County. Here's a couple of charts I wanted to share with you. So visitors to our site are looking for the outdoor recreation, a great throughput for places like Oak Ridge and Westford. Even better is our resident traffic. So these are people, so we can separate, you know, who's looking at the website, whether they're from out of the area or inside the area. And our resident traffic is even more oriented towards outdoor recreation. So our challenge now is to just get them to think about Oak Ridge, Westford, rather than thinking about going to Bend or out of the state someplace. We have great places right here in Lane County for them to visit. And so that's been our kind of challenge to our organization. And I know Carrie, our CEO, who had hoped to be here and actually present tonight, came down with a cold. And so she's at home recuperating. But she wanted to share that, you know, a few weeks ago, she came up and did an overnight stay up at the Westford Lodge, had a great experience. They hiked on the North Fork Trail, they hiked Tire Mountain, they came into town and had a burger at Three-Legged Crane, they drove the After Heidi Scenic Byway. And so one of the things that we're working on is this idea of pitching staycation itineraries like that one that Carrie experienced and, and really helping to support Lane County communities and businesses while having a true experience, because oftentimes people haven't even gotten out and experienced Lane County. So we want them to do that. Additionally, we're working on continuing to help get the After Heidi Scenic Bike Way designation. The official USFS letter of support was signed and sent to the Oregon Parks and Rec Division earlier this month. And so the official scenic bike way designation may still not happen anytime soon due to some budget and staffing issues. But getting the Forest Service letter was a huge step and our proponent group will continue to do what we can in the meantime. And our next step is a conversation with the Forest Service around safety and road condition signage on the After Heidi. We'll eventually ask for a letter of support from you all, the city council, but Oregon Parks and Rec wants all of those other letters within six months of the final submittal. So they don't want it just yet. Jeff Malik on our team is waiting until he knows if and when Oregon Parks and Rec can work on this before making that formal request from you all. So another thing, our members of our staff have sat in on the Willamette National Forest Listening Sessions conducted by the U of O Institute for Policy Research and Engagement. And we're also monitoring the Link Lane countywide transit and transportation master planning process. So staff is very active up in Oak Ridge, Westford. Through our staycation series and developing these itineraries, we hit mountain biking hard because of your unique quantity of high-quality trails and historic signals that is really your focus. But we don't limit that, our content, to just mountain biking by any means. Our staycation series, as I said, we're developing these different itineraries. And we've released so far, one for the McKenzie area, Cottage Grove, and Oak Ridge should be coming up here in the next couple of weeks. We're just finalizing the artwork on this and some of those itineraries. So this is artwork that's still in development. But again, really excited to share this on our different social media channels. Our hero image on our website right now is this great image of Waldo Lake. And as we want, Oak Ridge associated is the base camp for Waldo, for Willamette Pass, for Salt Creek Falls, and the Pacific Coast Trail. We maintain photo and video libraries on Oak Ridge and are happy to share those assets with you as a city. We're with community members or businesses working on projects to promote Oak Ridge. And we've got thousands and thousands of photos and lots of B-roll that we've shot. So if anybody's interested in that, we make that happen for you. We also support events taking place in the area through our social channels. This is just an example of what's been running here currently as we're supporting the Triple Summit Challenge, which is coming up here shortly. So I'm going to stop there. I usually start off presentations with a little kind of review that Traveling County is the organization name. We market the region as Eugene Cascades and Coast. We talked a little bit about that with the branding. But we are a 501(c)(6), so same as a chamber of commerce, professional nonprofit organization. And our sole purpose is tourism, marketing, economic development in the tourism space. And I also want to give a quick shout out to Linda Cammer. I know Linda's on the call tonight. Linda is one of our thirty board members. So we have a thirty-member board and nine ex officio members on our board. So it's a large, but very engaged board with a lot of experience. And we're very proud to have great representatives throughout the county. And Linda's a great contributor to our board. So I'm going to stop there and see if you have any questions. I know you have more on your agenda tonight. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Andy. I appreciate the, you sharing. Will you be able to share those slides with us at all?
Oh, I certainly can. And let me also, I wanted to go ahead and share some of these links there. So I'll give you some of those links if you want to take a look at some of those social media videos, blogs, and other things that I talked about today as well. So happy to share the slideshow as well.
Okay. All right. Well, I just had a couple of questions to you. And so I'm wondering how you're balancing the whole bend asking people not to come until, you know, after, after September holiday. And how are you incorporating and one, you know, there's a difference between having people come and do their stay vacations in Lane County and encouraging people to stay in Lane County. But I know you also want to market outside of it. Here in Oak Ridge, you know, we, we have a limited amount of accommodations, but we certainly want all of our businesses to benefit from this. But at the same time, because of where we are, we tend to get a lot of people that will come up for a day or two and then just boondock someplace to continue riding. And we've seen a great influx of that. And while that's wonderful for our food areas, it does have some concerns for citizens. And I really do appreciate the emphasis on how to, how to go to these communities and be respectful and how, how communities and businesses can respond respectfully to our visitors too. But what are your thoughts about Ben closing and considering our rising numbers? Where do you think we're going with that here?
Well, one of the things in terms of just being really sensitive to walking that line between, again, being sure the community was ready to have visitors and have visitors be safe, we have weekly conversations with the county health department and we look at those numbers very carefully. So we didn't want to get out ahead of that. Other areas around the state, as soon as Phase Two opened, they had TV ads running, they had social media ads. Our social media campaign was all organic up until two weeks ago. So we weren't doing any paid advertising until two weeks ago. So well into Phase Two and well in, you know, after we had these conversations to be sure that communities were ready. And even with these itineraries and these staycation campaign work that we're rolling out right now, we are checking back all the time with folks. You know, there's a couple of spots around the state, Ben being one of them, the gorge being another, in Lane County, our coastal hotels are seeing almost normal occupancies. The metro area is about thirty-five or forty percent occupancy, where it normally would be about eighty-five percent. So the hotels in the metro area are really hurting. I know up in Oak Ridge, up the McKenzie, some of the accommodations have done okay as well, as you mentioned, with people, you know, coming in and wanting to have those outdoor experiences, kind of be away from people and feel, feel safe. So, you know, we feel good about the process that we're going through. And, and while, you know, our plans look to a larger drive market, you know, three hundred miles, a one-day drive market is very typical for us to market to, we're not going there at all. We don't have any plans to go outside of a hyper-local marketing campaign right now. And all of our marketing right now is only within Eugene Springfield, other than we have, you know, tens of thousands of social media followers that are seeing stuff as well. But any paid advertising is happening all local. And yeah, we've got future ideas again about broadening that out if, if it made sense. But we're taking a very cautious approach to it. On the flip side of that, you know, is that, you know, we want to support businesses, you know, and these are people, people have worked really hard to build up these businesses and we hate to see them fail. So, you know, we've got to find that sweet spot and we're going to keep working hard to see if we can help out there.
Thank you, Andy. Council, do you have any questions?
This is Bobby. I have kind of an odd question. I was looking at the TRT funds and how that split out and how that happens. How, with the Airbnbs, how do you know you're capturing those funds from the Airbnbs that are in communities? Because you can go on an Airbnb website and see that there are a lot here. And I know there are some that are advertised in other places. But how do we know we're capturing all of them that are here local that we can actually get TRT from, funds from?
Yeah, that's a, that's a challenging one because Airbnb collects the funds. And so the good part is legislative session a couple of years ago mandated that the, those platforms collect for, from all of their folks and remit that to the authorities. But it's done as one check. So we get a lump sum. So we know when we signed the agreement with Airbnb now, about four years ago now, we saw a big jump in, in transient room tax collections. So we knew that obviously not probably everybody was remitting of their own accord. But once Airbnb was responsible for that, we saw it go up. But there's no auditing function that was included in the legislation. So it's been something that's been discussed a lot over the years. But right now, we just get the, the one check. So again, I think in conversations with Airbnb, and there's lots of other platforms as well, I think they do a pretty fair job of, of, you know, again, educating their folks about the need to collect the tax and remit the tax to them as part of that platform. So I feel like it's, it's working okay. But I know that in some communities where they've done some studies, it shows that there is still a pretty high percentage of noncompliance. I think it's something that we continue, you're going to need to continue to work on for sure.
So is there just the one major Airbnb platform that does this? Or are there multiple ones?
Oh, there are multiple ones, you know, VRBO and any of those third-party or those kind of platforms, those intermediary platforms. So there's, there's a number of them. But under the state legislation, all of them were required to put in place those mechanisms to collect the tax and remit that tax.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a side question on that.
Me as well.
Um, I think that was a great question, Bobby. And I'm curious for Andy, what about places that have a B, a B and B like on Craigslist or something that's not a major, you know, outlet? How is that tracked?
If they're, they'd have to have a business license to operate as a B and B. And part of the kind of licensing process is that they're educated and on the different taxes they are required to collect. And so again, that's, you know, you hope businesses are honest about paying their taxes. I know my sister is a tax compliance officer for the Department of Revenue and she'll tell you, a lot of people don't pay their taxes. So it's always a challenge. But on that, in that case, they're an individual business, they're doing their taxes like everybody else. They should be aware that they're required to, to collect that and remit that. And so that's how it would work.
Thank you, Andy.
So I had a question.
Go ahead, John.
So I'm curious to, you said you just get to like the one check from like VRBO and Airbnb Evolve and those kinds of places. So how does that trickle down to the actual community where the the overnight stay took place?
It goes back to that sort of complicated chart that the red, green, and blue sections of the TRT distribution. So the countywide tax is eight percent. Those four communities I mentioned add on one to one and a half percent. And any community can trigger an additional percentage that they would collect and keep themselves. So Eugene Springfield, Cottage Grove, and Florence each have a one to one and a half percent add-on to the eight percent the county charges. And on top of that, the state has one point five percent. That, all that money goes to Travel Oregon for Travel Oregon and the regional program. So those percentages that are, that are kind of dictated by, you know, where the rooms are and the percentage of rooms you have to the percentage of the total is the piece that the county carves out to remit back to you on that prorated basis. And so we get a report every month that shows within those areas, you know, how much is, is kind of collected and then remitted back at the end of the year to those areas. to those areas or actually monthly to those areas. So
So you actually get a breakdown of what from each like zip code or whatnot, how they do it, but you get a breakdown of each community's involvement?
Yeah, each incorporated city and then everybody else that's not in a part of an incorporated city goes into the other category. And so in relation to whether it's collected through an Airbnb, a campground, a hotel, a regular BNB, anything like that, all goes into the pot. And then it's distributed out based on these percentages. And, you know, we can talk more about, you know, again, the state law says that whatever percentage that was being collected within that community at the time the law was passed in two thousand and three, that was going towards destination marketing or destination infrastructure improvements. That percentage was locked in in two thousand and three. So like in our area, a hundred percent was going to destination marketing. In some communities, you know, fifty percent was going into their general fund and fifty percent was going to destination marketing. And so it was locked in back in two thousand and three. But, you know, there's some, I think, you know, you hear a lot of conversation about, well, especially these days, the legislature has had a lot of conversation about really kind of breaking into that TRT fund to fund, say, affordable housing for communities. And you know, the people who use this for destination marketing, infrastructure development are saying, but wait a minute, you know, that's already relieved your general fund of, you know, whatever you were using that money for. So when I take that money that you have in your general fund, if you want to use it for affordable housing or other activities, road improvements, et cetera. And so it's it's something that happens every session and maybe not now, you know, it'll be interesting to kind of see when the numbers fall out, you know, again, our industry, they're anticipating the hotel industry is going to take probably four to five years to get back to where we were pre pandemic. They're anticipating losing probably reporters of the restaurants. And these are national numbers. This won't necessarily translate to Lane County, but and we certainly hope it doesn't. But it's going to be a long road out for hospitality industry, but we've been a really resilient industry in the past and weathered some pretty big storms. So everybody loves to travel and as soon as it's, you know, healthy so on a big scale, it's going to come back and things will start to rebuild for sure.
Thank you, Andy. I appreciate it. It sounds to me like this discussion has probably brought up a few items that we probably need to put on future agendas. One being whether or not we license our Airbnbs, which we currently do not ask them to do a business license. So I would suggest that as a council, we consider doing that. And, you know, I I'm not sure we want to consider doing a tax on our of our own at a one or one point five percent, but we definitely need to start with licensing our Airbnbs. So perhaps for a future agenda item, Brian, if you could make note of that, we can do that. I appreciate it, Andy. Thank you very much. Yes, Don.
I have questions.
Okay, we are getting, we're getting at about eight fifteen and stuff more to go, but please go ahead, Don.
Thank you. Andy, I wondered, I know in your video, it it's mentioned that different portion, a lot of statistics for how much revenue comes into restaurants and hotels and stuff from tourism. But I was wondering how you track that? As a person who goes out to eat, I've never been asked if I'm traveling or am I local? So how do how do you guys know how much is spent in tourism?
Yeah, we use a company called Dean Runyon and Associates and they they work for, you know, I don't know how many states across the United States, and they have an econometric model they use. And so, you know, one of the things is, you know, who's considered a visitor? And so in a lot of the kind of data, anybody that travels more than fifty miles is considered a visitor. So if I live here in Santa Clara and I travel to Florence for the day, I'm a I'm a daytime visitor to Florence. And so, again, it's an econometric model that looks at, you know, spending across, you know, these different areas and and they do surveying to kind of build their model, but I could certainly kind of get you the information about if you're if you're interested and the they give us a report that I post on our website every year and in the back of it, it has a bunch of that information about how they gather that data. But it's a it's a model. So, you know, we use it to kind of show relatively, you know, if you're consistent in how you're analyzing that data year to year, it's at least a gauge on year over year, if it's going up, whether or not you're improving or not. So there's a lot of information that can be gathered from, for example, hotel stays, the length of stay, how much the spend is for those groups. And so they come up with, again, kind of daily spend rates, group party rates, you know, how much they spend in a day and how many days they spend in a destination. And so it's a way for us, again, to kind of measure over time, you know, whether it's exactly a billion dollars. I wouldn't necessarily take that to the bank, but but it's 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 big business and it's been growing for for many years in Oregon. So we feel pretty confident that it gives us a good gauge on where we're at and where we're going. And then, you know, clearly the transient room taxes in terms of that's a something that's directly measurable to, you know, the number of overnight stays in the in the region. So I'm not a not an economist, so I'm not going to even try to explain the the modeling, but I'm happy to hook you up with the information if you'd like to dig into it at some point.
Thank you. And I'll I'll leave it at that. I have another question, but I'm willing to pass.
And all
I'm sure Andy would be happy to answer by email too, if you
Email in the chat and also add one more link. I, when I started, again, my background is in public transportation where I spent over three decades and then I moved over to Traveling County about four and a half years ago. So I'm still learning a lot myself. And one of the things was really the history of this transit room tax. And so I put together a whole timeline of the whole history of the transit room tax for Lane County. And I've got it in a document that sits on our website. So I'll put that link in too, as you guys continue on and then I'll drop off and let you do your business.
Thank you.
All right, move on then. Brian, would you like to do your CA update?
Yes, ma'am. To start out with, I first like to introduce our talented new finance director and let him say a couple of words. And before I get to the update, Eric, could you come off mute? Let him tell about yourself. Maybe not. Try to catch him later. All right. So to start with, to get to your ordinance question about police activity there. The chief of police has has presented questions to Pat, our city prosecutor. What's left is for the chief, myself, Pat and Matt to get together. And to be honest with you, the it's been out of my focus because the end of year stuff, two public meetings and a couple of other things. So we are, it'll be in my focus now. We're beyond those and I have some free time. So we will, we will get that together and they come up with recommendations on how to write ordinances that will replace entire sections of code. Obviously, the the city charter changes are going to be a little more significant. So with that, I'll move on to the next unless Eric is ready to speak. There you are. You want to say a couple of words, Eric? You're on mute.
Yeah, um, yeah, my name's Eric. I've lived in Oregon my whole life. I grew up in Roseburg in a logging family. Moved to Eugene in ninety two. Had my own remodeling business for a while, then went back to school and got an accounting degree. Mountain biking is my favorite activity in the world. So I've been in Oak Ridge a lot and saw that there was an opening for the finance director. So applied and got the job and happy to be there.
Well, welcome, Eric. Eric, can you tell us your last name again, please?
It's Kaitola.
And can you spell that for me?
K Y T O L A.
Thank you. I'm so glad that you're here.
Thank you.
So Eric and Bill are are in the middle of a massive turnover and Bill is still hanging around and passing what he knows down to Eric and he's on available as well. So thanks and welcome aboard, Eric. Glad to have you.
Yeah, thank you.
So next for an update is at the request of a citizen, we did an investigation on a citizen complaint against significant odors surrounding Avant Gardens, which is next to the Nazarene Church. So Matt Dalston took a close look at all the the cups that were written, the conditional use permits and the whole process. The staff did a walkthrough. The owner volunteered to open up his place and let us do a walkthrough. He was able to walk through Eric. Rick actually did the walkthrough before he left, but when he was there, everything was according to what the conditional use permit requested. And interestingly enough, it was in, I guess, the plants were in Bloomer when Rick was there and he couldn't spell anything. So it was just a, but who knows? So looking at and look at the language in the conditional use permit that says we will, the owners will install filtration that will combat the odors, not eliminate them. I I found that they are within their conditional use permit, but we will continue to monitor if it comes to a situation where the odor has become noxious, then planning commission does have a leg to stand on, though Matt says it would be a tough road to follow in court. So I just want to make you aware of that investigation. Next, the new wood exempt list is available for two thousand and twenty one. Copies on City Hall and on webpage, you can download them and fill them out. It has new income levels because it goes up with the HUD factors. And we will be taking people that have been impacted by COVID will take that paperwork as well if it's an income driven exemption. And consider that in the in the application. The strategic plan survey is available on Facebook, on the website, should have gotten some in your water bills and at the library and City Hall. So push that out and make sure we get lots of response to that. Andy mentioned the Triple Summit Challenge and yes, Oak Ridge is going to help support the Triple Summit Challenge, twenty five through twenty seven September. I've looked at their sort of COVID mitigation plan and it's pretty rigorous. So I was impressed. We will continue to work with them. If they do ask for an alcohol permit, that will come before you. In addition to that, the Sasquatch Bureau is also going to partner with Oak Ridge and that is October third. And again, their COVID mitigation plan was very rigorous. So again, same thing with the alcohol. I do believe they're going to push forward an alcohol permit. And let's see, I think that's it for the update. Mayor, do you want to go on to ten point three? Let me bring the packet back up again. Okay, if you're ready, the it's the locomotor vehicle fuel tax. It's an informational thing. It's agenda item ten point three and we're looking for a motion from the floor. You saw the ordinances I attacked, which were existing ordinance for the fuel tax, the state ordinance, ORS, and an LLC model ordinance, which had a lot of good information on it in there. So we tasked us with the gathered information on increasing the locomotor vehicle fuel tax. The significant points I brought out were basically the financial, the financial advantage or increase in revenue and how that would work, how that would look. Obviously, if you tinker with the two cents or make that higher or lower, that the number adjusts as such. This does have to go to the ballot per ORS three one nine. And again, I'm recommending, there was a typo there. It's Council Whitney quickly found that, quickly caught me, recommending May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty one. So we can avoid a double majority rule of measure forty seven and also give us time to socialize the reason why we need this tax. I showed you also shared, pointed out a pure cities list on the back page of that exhibit three. And I've spoken with the city administrator of Coburg about their recent change. And I know Crestwell is working on our, we're going to go on the ballot this November. Fiscal impact is there and your options in my mind are direct me to prepare for the ballot measure or send me back to the books to look for more information. We're recommending to start preparing and there's also, there's always time to modify it as we get closer to the process. And the motion's before you. You're muted there.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate the work you've done. So, you know, counsel wanted to look at this and see what it would entail, how you do it, and what the impact to our to our budget would be. I am I would, I would ask counsel to discuss this before we even move to a motion. We have talked about it briefly and this is the first time we've had information. And Brian, you did a good job putting together a lot of different pieces of information and pulling together what other communities are doing and their taxes and what that does. So with counsel's permission, I'd like to open it up for just discussion. And is this something that you feel you want to pursue? And then we can talk about making a motion. John, I know that you initially kind of mentioned it and asked that we kind of look at it. So I'm going to open it up to you first to hear your thoughts.
Well, initially I have a question because when Bill had mentioned this in a previous session, he quoted a number of two hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars for the entire year. Is that not still a correct number? I'm guessing that this is year to date projection for the entire year, given the pandemic.
Well, these numbers came from Bill and it says here he's using fiscal year nineteen consumption. So
I think what Bill may have been talking about in the two hundred and thirty thousand dollar figure is the state revenue.
Right.
Which is a state gas tax, which that
That's correct. So this is just a local portion of those taxes. We do get some money from the state.
Okay, because then I was confused because I had an email back from him in regards to it and he again had quoted that same kind of number. And my understanding was that was our our receipt, our receipts, not just the state's.
I'll get an answer for you on that.
Either way, you know, I was looking at it and and my my motivation behind wanting us to take a look at it is is this is a way to fund the badly needed road repairs within the city and not put the whole burden on residents of the city. You know, this is our only way of gathering a tax where we're actually taxing people who don't live here. And if you go down to the bottom and you look at the sheet that Brian attached in regards to what other cities charge. Yes, right now we're right in there, but obviously with like Coburg going up, I I think that some of those other cities are going to go up too. But what I found interesting was the the two cities, both coastal cities, that really only do it for five months out of the year or or have an increase for five months out of the year. And those five months are obviously they're high tourism times. You know, I mean, because it's a double edged sword for me. You know, I don't want it, I wouldn't want it to have a negative impact on the economically challenged within the community. But we also, I feel, need to do something to help gather funds to take care of our decaying road situation. And so I actually would kind of be interested in the idea of higher than just two cents, but a shorter period of time during, I mean, and I don't know how that all works. I have to be honest about that. During the track tourism time where we could gather more and not have an impact, minimize the impact to the citizens of the community and particularly those who are economically challenged. That's my thought.
Thank you, John. I appreciate, I appreciate that. You know, just on my thoughts on this. You know, it seems like a hard time to be talking about raising taxes. But I think at the same time, when you look at this and, you know, I have heard from a few folks, well, I guess that means I'll be buying all my gas in Eugene now. It's like, okay, we'll pay the Eugene tax so that Eugene can get your money. Because it's going to go to Eugene. I think sometimes we forget that a .02 cents on a tank of gas is going to cost you maybe, maybe $2. And that money is going to go directly to your community. Now, having said that, I'm not advocating for, for doing the tax or not doing the tax. I just think John's point that it is a, that it is a way to pull in income from those other than those that live here as well as those that live here is, is a good point. And I would be willing to pursue looking at this. And Brian, did you say 20, 2021?
I would recommend the general election, the primary election until May 18th, 21.
And Mayor, your two cents a gallon on a 10 gallon fill up is 20 cents, not $2. So. Very minimal amount per time. I mean, it's, it's not even the amount that people would pay for a cup of coffee.
Right, right. Exactly. Counsel, any other discussion? Dawn, I saw you come off.
Yeah, no, I, I put my hand up just now. I've actually looked into this quite a bit. I don't think that two cents is going to do anything for getting any roads done around Oak Ridge. If you look at our historical, what it costs to do a repair on a road. We've only actually had two repair or two rebuilds in the last five years. One of them was 209,000 and then are actually the one that's projected to be done this year is 125,000. And we're getting a grant to pay for that. But going from $60,000 revenue up to $100,000 revenue isn't going to get the kind of work done that we need done. We would need so much more considering how long, I mean, in five years, we've done one road. That's, that's what we can afford. So 40,000 or $37,000 isn't, isn't going to help much. And I don't, I don't see that that's a really good thing to put on people, especially since we're having, you know, levy for our safety services in Oak Ridge. I mean, I could go, and I have notes, but I'm just going to leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Dawn. I would, I would point out that, you know, that, that $40,000 extra that we get over and above what we already do can accumulate. And in the five years that it seems to take us to do a project from one to another, you've, you've, you've accumulated $200,000 to be able to go toward road, which is 200,000 that we didn't have five years ago. So it does, it does accrue, but I understand what you're saying and especially I appreciate your point about maybe this isn't the best time to do that. Considering we're looking at a levy in November. But it is, it is definitely for me, something that we need to be keeping in mind. Any other thoughts?
Yes, this is Bobby. Sorry, did somebody else have?
No.
Um, so even though it wouldn't accrue a lot, I think what it brings in is enough for us to match some different grants that we can apply for to repair our roads. Cause a lot of these grants that we apply for ask for us to have a match. And showing that our community is paying a little bit more for gas to help pay for our roads just shows that the community is more receptive to this and really has a buy-in to making better roads within our community. And that can help contribute to getting more grants to pay for those. So I, you know, and I hear what Dawn's saying and I agree, but I think it, it has ways of allowing us to do more. And not just over a long period of time, but maybe sooner. And, and it is in May and hopefully things will be a lot better in May and next year. I'm going to be optimistic and say they're going to be much better. And this will be more doable for people. But this will, I think, I wouldn't be surprised if we didn't see higher dollar amounts because we now have a gas station on the other side of the highway. So you have different people stopping to get gas. Cause I know for me personally, that matters. You know, where it's at if I'm going to have to cross a whole bunch of traffic or not as to if I'm going to stop. But I do think it's a great idea. You know, I hate adding more to people's pocketbook, but I think two cents is a very small amount. And, and I think it helps spread out the need for revenue and just makes it easier for everybody to swallow that, that two cents.
Thank you, Bobby. Ever any other comments?
Yeah, I have a thought. So I agree with everything that's, that's been said really. And I agree that a match is certainly something that we could utilize as leverage for bigger grants. Gas tax really is the most direct tax to the end user. So for me, I don't see what it's going to hurt besides obviously the, the staff time that it takes to prepare the ballot measure. But really it's the community taking that boat, you know? So it's not like we're, you know, shoving this down anyone's throat. We're asking the community, you know, is this worth paying into for, for better streets in our community? That's my perspective.
Thank you, Tricia. I appreciate that. Any other thoughts? Chrissy, I see you leaning forward.
Yeah. I feel like we've asked a lot from our community this year. We raised water rates this year and we're asking for a levy and now we're asking, we're considering asking for a gas tax. For me, the timing's really bad. And, you know, I hate for anything to deter from the, because we still have a lot of hard feelings about the water rate increase. And I would hate for anything to deter from what we're trying to do on the levy. And also I do think a lot of people, when they get gas, you know, they do, I do see your point, Mayor Holston, that it would be great if people would consider where they get their gas, where their money's going to. But I think what people actually do is they drive down the road and they look for the lowest price. And so, you know, if people know that the Texas or whatever the gas station is in Pleasant Hill, if they know it's, you know, five cents cheaper, they're going to, you know, drive there and get their gas because it's a couple cents cheaper. And I know it seems silly, but that's the real world. People go wherever they can save a little bit on their gas. The same things and it happens in Eugene. So my personal opinion is the timing's really poor.
Thank you, Chrissy. I appreciate that. So we're having, having heard this question, hold, yes, someone said something. I heard it.
I did, but so, I mean, if we follow Brian's timeline, we're actually not looking at trying to even do this for a year. It's just my one thing to point out. And the other thing to point out is, is no matter how big of a tank you have, you're still talking less than a dollar per fill-up. And I used to be one of those people that got gas wherever it was cheapest. And, and I have changed my practice. I always buy my gas in, in Oak Ridge now. When I was commuting to Bend five days a week, I would get gas in Bend because it was cheaper than it was here. But now that I'm educated as to the ramifications of that, I've changed my, my buying habit.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that. Dawn, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say that I would really like to look at you know, number one, what are we going to do with the money? Number two, how is, how does our budget look for our street department? I noticed I, I reviewed our budget actually just a few days ago on that fund and noticed something I missed during budget season that we actually added a couple of positions into that apartment. And so I feel like we should really be looking at, you know, how the money's going to be spent and stipulating how the money's going to be spent. And, and what we're currently doing before we ask, you know, people to pay more.
Well, I believe the gas tax, any gas taxes is required to be sent, spent on your road maintenance. It's not like it can be used anyplace else.
No, I know. But so for example, we have over 10 roads that have needed repair for more than 20 years.
Right.
Not gotten attention. Yet we have a TSP that has prioritized East First Street over all of the roads that have been in desperate need of repair forever. So to me, that's not focusing on the people. People have actually been paying the three cent tax, gas tax for our roads for numerous years. And we've done very little for them.
Yes.
So I would say we need to really be focused on what we're going to do before we ask for more.
Well, I think if we had more, we could do some of those things. And I think remembering that our TSP is a, is a projection of what we want to do as a vision. And we are not, as we were, we were reminded and we know we're not wedded to the priority list that is in there that we can determine what needs to be done in, at a different order at any time. I, I think, I just think that that isn't an argument not to look at how this can really help the community. I hear the community, you know, we hear them talk about the roads are bad. I agree, the roads are bad. They would like them repaired. If we can do something that is of minimal, in my opinion, impact and also taps into dollars that come through. And it could help us and it will help us solve some of those road issues that we have had, like you say, for many years. I think it behooves us as a council to take a look at it. I am a little curious about the tax during certain periods of the year. I'm not sure what we would identify because we do get a lot of traffic all the time. And I would be much more, much more willing to do it 12 months out of the year and not just some. So I think at this time, you know, we've had a lot of discussion and we all kind of feel one way or the other. I am looking for a motion or a recommendation from the council at this point.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
I'd like to direct the city administrator to do further research or no further action.
You have to choose one or the other. You can't direct him to do further research and no action.
Well, it's written on our.
I know, but you could do either direct him to do no further action, which is we don't need to do anything, or direct him to do further research on and fill in the blank.
Okay, I'd like to direct him to do further research on the gas tax option.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I would be curious what that research would, would entail. But I also want to just highlight really quick. I, I do share that same concern with Counselor Holla of, you know, the series of events, like the water rate increase and then asking for a levy and then asking for a gas tax increase. So for me, maybe the timing isn't great. I don't know necessarily that it would fully impact getting that levy passed, but I obviously think that's our priority. But those are my thoughts.
This is Bobby. I agree with, I agree with Chrissy as well, that the timing is not great. So maybe, you know, after May of next year, maybe whichever ballot follows, ballot follows after that, maybe that's the one we look at seriously putting this on. And it gives us a little more time to really research it a little more and focus on other things that we have on our list of things to get done. But I think it's important to visit this and, and I do think Chrissy's right that the timing isn't great. But it is important that we get some additional revenue to support our city.
So I'm, I just want to clarify what, what I just heard, Counselor Whitney, so that I, I know where you're coming from, is, is you, you think it's important that we pursue this. You think May next year is a good time, but you don't want to pursue writing the ballot measure now because of the, of way that, of the way that looks because of the other things that we've done this year. So are you, are you, you feeling like you would rather wait until next year to, to readdress this issue? Or do you want to address this issue now and wait until next year to put it on the ballot?
I do not think May is a good time to put this on the ballot. I agree with Chrissy that that's just too close. But I would like to continue looking at this and researching it and not lose it, you know? Maybe the, whichever ballot we have, I don't know, after May is done, maybe the one following is the one we do. Yeah, so.
May is too soon.
I agree that it's too soon.
Okay.
But I don't want to lose this because I think this is a great idea. So.
Thank you. That helps me in my mind clarify what you were saying because I was hearing two contradictory things there. So I appreciate that. We have, John, I see you.
So I, I agree. The timing is not great. But I'd also say, when is the timing ever good to ask people to pay more money? It's never going to be good. My other point was is this seems like the council just kicking the can down the road again and not willing to take any sort of action that would help the community as a whole. You know, I, I think we would be better off to make a motion that moved it to the, the ballot following May, if, if we all agree May's too soon. And go ahead and let the city administrator get started on this. I mean, he has a very full plate and giving him as much time to put and pull all this together, I, I think would be advantageous for us.
So I don't feel like this is kicking the can down the road. I feel like we have a lot of things that we're balancing right now and a lot of things going on. And we need to focus on those first. And that this, like Chrissy said earlier, I think this is, if we look at May, it's too close to what's already going on. And so for me, for example, if my children were to come to me today and want 20 bucks to go to the store because I got paid a week ago, I'm probably going to tell them no. But if they come to me next Friday and I've just gotten paid, I'm probably going to say yes. So the, the timing is important in how we do this and how we present this to our community. And if we keep pushing, if we push it through, I just don't think it'll happen. If we're, if we push too, if we follow too closely to asking for a levy. I just, you know, I don't see it happening. And I think if we push it out further, it gives more time for research and it gives us the time that we need to get other things done.
Thank you, Bobby. I appreciate that. Chrissy, are you wanting to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I agree with Bobby on both of those statements. In fact, I think putting this on the forefront actually will jeopardize them both. And they, in my opinion, they probably both will fail. um, putting this um on the forefront actually will jeopardize them both and they, in my opinion, they probably both will fail. Um, the other thing I wanted to add on to that, um, Counselor Kenyon was discussing about the TSP is if we were to um go for um putting this on the ballot is, you know, presenting in my, in my um mind, when Counselor Kenyon says, direct further research, that means that we're maybe gonna have a prioritized list for what streets we're looking at and so that we have some council discussion. Um, you know, because I can say personally, I've seen the discussion for almost ten years on social media, top people talking about how bad the, the city streets are here. So um, you know, if we had some type of prioritize the list that we're really looking into and maybe putting that out there to citizens when we were to go for asking, put this on the ballot. Again, I just think it's um, putting this on May is just, just too close to the levy and I think our focus needs to be on the levy.
Thank you Chrissy, I appreciate what you said. I will point out that when we go for, if indeed this does come to fruition um sometime in the future, that um indicating what specific, tying what specific projects you're going to do to your tax is, is not wise and something we probably can't even do. However, um, you know, having council uh direct um city administrator to bring a list of prioritized streets to us um as to what we can start first. Prioritization of, of street repairs is um, is a function of public works. Um, and council definitely has input in that, but a lot of that depends on, you know, how much material do we need for this project, how much ma- material you need for this project? Is there an overflow that you can do some of this and part of that? So there's a, there's a lot more to that, but definitely tie in to a tax and saying this tax will be used to prioritize first Berry Street, this street, and this street is something we can't do. So just so that we, we understand that. And, but I do appreciate what you said and I appreciate that we have, we seem to have been unable to come up with the funds that we need, hence this whole discussion. Um, as to how can we improve our roads? How can we accrue the money that we need to have in order to, to provide for our citizens um in a way that they expect because they pay taxes? Um, both in um, you know, regular tax as well as gas tax. So um, there is a motion on the floor. Um, Tricia did ask a good question, Dawn, as to what your further research is. In your motion, it's, it is a little vague. Chrissy indicated, or Counselor Hollitt indicated that she had one idea for it. When you said uh, research, I had a different idea. So I would, um, I would suggest friendly that maybe we tighten that up a little bit as to what you mean, so that our city administrator has some direction in what to go, what uh you're looking for, for further research. My other suggestion would be is we could always um just say um, we want to um keep this on the active list and readdress it in May.
Um, well, a couple of things. One is I think that I'd like to see the council have more discussion about our street fund and our, um, our needs for street repairs in the city of Oak Ridge and, and kind of talk about priorities as far as street repairs go or street rebuilds go. But I'd also like to see, as far as research goes, um information from the city about what kinds of, not only obviously I already know what major repairs have been done or rebuilds have been done, but what do we do um to maintain roads throughout the year? And um, and why are we having more staff added into that department recently? Stuff like that.
Okay, well, I, 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 I think those are all, both valid, um, valid requests. I, I, I hesitate to combine that with this. Um, this is specific to a gas tax, whether we want to move forward with it, whether we don't want to move forward with it, whether we want to just table it until later.
Have that information before I make, move forward with it. I'd like to know what goes on in our street repairs.
Okay, um.
More tax.
Alright, so I, so you have a motion on the floor now um to um do some further research um specific to what kind of repairs we are doing now and maintenance as well as um prioritization of uh, of the needs in Oak Ridge for street repair.
Yeah.
Okay, so uh, so are you okay with that addition to your motion?
Sure.
Alright, and uh, Chrissy, you seconded that. Are you okay with that addition too? Okay, thank you. Um, Jackie, will you um call roll please for a vote?
Counselor McClelland?
Nay.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Forecombe?
Did we lose Counselor Forecombe? I think he's coming back. I see shadows.
Come back to him Jackie.
Counselor Luke. Okay, Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Maxfield?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Forecombe?
Aye.
Alright, that passes. Thank you. Um, I'll, thank you council for that, that discussing. Um, I think um, addressing the issues of street repairs is important to our community. It constantly gets brought up and, and rightly so. Um, so these are good, just, good, good conversations. Um, let's move on to the grant staff report. Um, Brian, can you share that with us, please?
Ma'am, it's ten point four. It's a summary of the grants in, in action right now. Look at the I chart here, let me see if I can figure. Probably not to my satisfaction, but I'll just give you a brief of what's changed. Uh, so as you may remember, uh, Rick had put in a, or actually got someone from the U of O to put in a, a development grant for remodeling uh, the uh, City Hall conference room and that was sponsored by AARP. Uh, we did not get selected for that, so that is off the table. Everything else is in and let's see, the one thing that did go in at the end of July is uh, if you remember, uh, we withdrew Berry Street, a small city allotment because it got ready to expire. And that grant was only at fifty, so we withdrew it. And I re- uh, applied for Berry Street at a hundred thousand dollar grant. Um, as it turns out, as I looked at the estimate that had been put in initially for in excess of two hundred thousand dollars, that was for the Cadillac version of a street, which would include curbs, sidewalks and uh bike paths. However, if you slim it down and, and take a little less, uh, make it less Cadillac with one sidewalk, it's a hundred and seven. It even had a better one that was no sidewalks, just repaved the existing road and that was fifty. So I think uh that there's uh, you know, I want, didn't want to leave money on the table, so I chose the one oh seven, which would give us a sidewalk on one, on the south side of the road and uh, and repaved the thing. And we'll have to do some of the utility work that we were gonna roll into that. Uh, other than that, uh, I think, let's see. Everything else is just still in work, so I'll uh, I will stop there with that. Any questions on grants?
So are you saying that you put in a grant, you requested the hundred and seven K?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, that's what I thought you said. Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate you not going with the Cadillac version. Alright, and if, go ahead Dawn.
What's our status with the Mba grant? We were supposed to, I believe, have that complete by October this year.
Yes, the Mba grant. Uh, we got the notice to proceed from ODOT, which means we can start executing funds. Uh, the contractor has already been selected for the restroom, but because the funds that got so delayed at ODOT, he cannot do that until September, which is okay with ODOT. I checked with their program manager. Uh, the one thing we can proceed on is the pavilion. And so uh, I'm meeting with the Parks Committee on Monday. And we're gonna go over the options for the pavilion because it was really kinda soft. What we really have to find out is where can it go? Because it can't go under power lines and that kinda thing. So we're gonna have to work with George Custer who's volunteered to contract it and then with the committee and figure out uh that, the pavilion and then order it. So uh, that's where we are with that and that, those two items will take care of the grant.
How much is the bathroom estimated to cost? Is it a full build like a, like a brick?
Sixty thousand dollars.
Bathroom?
Sixty thousand dollars.
Okay. Great. We have to make it that, that done, but I feel that sounds like.
I have, I have just a couple of questions about that, just to refresh my memory. There's a bathroom and a pavilion going at the Emerald Park? And is there, the bike station was already, was there one of those going in to Green Waters or Emerald Park or not happening?
You mean Diamond View?
Diamond Park.
I'm sorry, Diamond View, that's what I meant. Um.
My understanding is, my understanding is, and I, believe me, I'm, I'm behind the power curve on the pavilion because that was really managed by Rick, but uh, the restroom definitely is going in Diamond View. The pavilion, I think, could, could uh, we're trying to get it in Diamond View, but we'll see where, where it needs to go.
So was there a bike repair station as well?
I have no knowledge of a bike repair station.
I don't believe so Chrissy, and I think the Diamond View um was, was the preferred site for the um, for the um pavilion also, because then it can be used for um, for the summer lunch program and it has a cover and and all that, since that's where they have been doing it anyway, out in the, out in the elements rather than covered. But I believe, Brian, you said you're meeting with the Parks Department?
We're having their committee meeting on Monday night, so we're gonna go over.
Perfect, perfect, wonderful.
And, and you're absolutely right Kathy, that is what we discussed at that committee.
That's what I thought you had reported. Excellent, okay.
I remember that as well, when Kathy and I both met with Franny several months back, that that pavilion was going there as well.
Right. Wonderful. Okay, let's move on. Um, it is nine o'clock and with council's permission, I'm gonna add thirty minutes to our meeting. Hopefully we'll get done before that. Are you all okay with that? Thumbs up? Okay, good. Brian, reports of boards, commissions and committees, administrative advisory committee?
I just, I just.
Yeah, we have an appointment and I'm gonna move number fourteen up because it is nine o'clock.
The appointment's been canceled there. She withdrew, she withdrew her, uh, from consideration.
Oh, okay, I must have missed that then. Okay, thank you. Um, then administrative advisory committee, uh, reports.
I'll take a second. I only listed the committees that actually met last month.
Okay.
Um, the, the administrative advisory committee did meet, the uh, the four of us, and uh, they chose a pro temp chair, which is Amy Kelly.
Okay.
Till we get the resolutions passed and, and reshuffle everybody.
Okay, good.
So uh, we're moving forward. I've asked them to, they're gonna take one more look at the resolutions that uh, Counselor Maxfield so graciously produced. And uh, then we'll bring them to uh, council next session. In addition, they're looking at uh, forms and fees. So Amy Kelly does a lot of form work for me as far as uh, making them PDF fillables. And then we're also looking at rental fees for city properties. So we're gonna review those and those will eventually get to uh, the council. And Planning Commission met in a work session last month and ironically, they, they were looking at uh, short-term rentals. So we had a lot of discussion, not so much about the tax part of it, but more about um, the zoning part of it. Do you want them in your R1 neighborhoods or, or where do you want them?
Really? Interesting, okay.
So, um, I mean, obviously the, the easy thing to do is go talk about taxes, but not really the Planning Commission's party, so. They, they, they wanted to go there, but in any case, um, other than that, that's the committees that met last month.
Okay, and do we, have we had any response? Don't, don't we have it posted for Planning Commission for um vacancies?
I have not received uh, a resignation letter yet.
Oh, okay, well then we don't have a vacancy. Um, um, thank you for letting me know that, I appreciate that. Um, so we have no items removed from the consent agenda, there's no ordinances. Uh, who's Tricia? Hi.
Yes. Um, so for that administrative advisory committee, I don't recall as a council sending that back down to committee.
I don't either and I was concerned about that as well.
I'm sorry, what, what was the question?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the question is.
So, as a council, we never sent the resolutions back down to the committee, which means that that committee voted to send those forward. So it should be at the council level.
Yeah, I'm just looking for typos and I can change any of the intent or meat of the resolutions, just wanna make it clear.
Okay.
The i's are dotted and the t's crossed.
Just making sure it wasn't gonna be another six month.
There'll be no more vote about.
Thank you. Thank you Tricia and Chrissy for your eagle ears and eagle eyes. Um, okay. Um, I think we have completed everything that we need to complete. Uh, unless I've missed something, uh, I wish you all a good evening and thank you all for being so patient. Yes. Oh, public comment. Is there any public who wants to comment either online or at the WAC?
All by myself at the WAC.
Okay, online I don't see anything. Dawn, I see your hand. Did you wanna say something?
No, I just wanted to ask what our status is on the Green Waters Park Pavilion. I didn't hear anything about that.
On the redo of the building, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay, is it complete?
We've accepted the, the work. Rick went and looked at it before he left and was pleased with the repairs they had done to the, what he considered a substandard job at first, so he signed off on that repair and uh, it is available for rent. And I think extra Jack, he signed somebody up the other day. Uh, you know, all pending, we gotta comply with COVID mitigation, but other than that, it's ready to go and uh, the uh, yeah, it's, it's uh, we got, just have to pay the contractor. It did it.
Excellent, good. I'm glad that's finally done. Thank you Dawn for asking the question. Any other further questions? No? Alright, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Goodbye everybody, sleep well.